Everyone, please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for all, please remain standing if you choose. We're gonna start with the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Thank you all.
Good morning, everybody. There will be no workshop or meeting next week for the Thanksgiving holiday week. In the following week, there will be a meeting with Mr. Cantal Melesa in this room at ten AM on Tuesday, November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, and will you be having yours at eleven? Commissioner? No? Okay. And the next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, November twenty ninth, at ten thirty in this room also, and then on the thirtieth, we'll start our budget hearings at nine AM in this room on Thursday, November thirtieth. So that's up and coming. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Here.
Ms. Frenchco?
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated November eighth, twenty twenty-three, and accept and approve the video recording of the November eighth, twenty twenty-three Commissioners' Regular Meeting is the official meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
No.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number five is to transfer appropriations.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number six is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of November as National Adoption Month, and November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Adoption Day in Trumbull County, Ohio. The theme for this year's National Adoption Month is Empowering Youth, Finding Points of Connection. The Board of Trumbull County Commissioners recognizes the extensive efforts of Probate Court Judge James Frederica and the Trumbull County Children's Services to find loving, permanent families for all children. In twenty twenty-three, in Trumbull County, fourteen foster children had adoptions finalized. Seventeen children are waiting finalization through the court, and thirty children are waiting for loving, permanent families.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco? Item number seven is to amend the journal action taken by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, duly recorded in Journal Volume One fifty-seven, page two-six-zero-zero-zero, regarding modification number one to Bowman Appraisal Services, Inc., for appraisal review services, Western Reserve Greenway Bike Trail Phase Four, Project ID nine-nine-eight-zero-four, located in Howland and Weathersfield Township in Warren and Nile City, in the amount of six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Amendment is necessary to correct the fund number as listed, and to allow Denny Malloy, President of the Board, to sign letter form agreement on behalf of the Board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number six is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of November as National Adoption Month, and November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Adoption Day in Trumbull County, Ohio. The theme for this year's National Adoption Month is Empowering Youth, Finding Points of Connection. The Board of Trumbull County Commissioners recognizes the extensive efforts of Probate Court Judge James Frederica and the Trumbull County Children's Services to find loving, permanent families for all children. In twenty twenty-three, in Trumbull County, fourteen foster children had adoptions finalized. Seventeen children are waiting finalization through the court, and thirty children are waiting for loving, permanent families.
Make a motion to approve?
Quietly, second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number seven is to amend the journal action taken by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, duly recorded in Journal Volume One fifty-seven, page two-six-zero-zero-zero, regarding modification number one to Bowman Appraisal Services, Inc., for appraisal review services, Western Reserve Greenway Bike Trail Phase Four, Project ID nine-nine-eight-zero-four, located in Howland and Weathersfield Township in Warren and Nile City, in the amount of six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Amendment is necessary to correct the fund number as listed, and to allow Denny Malloy, President of the Board, to sign letter form agreement on behalf of the Board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eight is to approve Contract Eight-five-zero-dash-two-four-dash-eight-zero between the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and Garwin, Inc., for the term of October first, twenty twenty-three, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, in an amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Garwin, Inc. will provide non-emergency medical transportation based on a loaded mile or additional passenger unit of payment costs to provide non-emergency transportation services for eligible and approved Medicaid recipients who have no other means of transportation to and from Title Nineteen Medicaid providers or managed care providers who provide Medicaid reimbursable services.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there, is there a reason why this is date, backdated to October first of this past last month?
Correct. The contracts are from October first through September thirtieth. And we had to have them evaluated and everything like that, and then, once we did that, we had to have the vendors in to review it and sign the contract. So by the time we got it here, it was a little bit later.
So the vendors have already reviewed it and signed the contract?
Yes, that's why they're here.
And was it approved already by the prosecutors? This says that it's...
This, these contracts...
I, I understand. I'm telling you what I'm looking at. It says it's subject to review for approval from the prosecutor's office, but it's already been signed. So I'm assuming that it's, that this line that says, "Subject to Approval," shouldn't be here because it's a state contract?
Well, yes. It's the same contract that's been used since approximately two thousand and ten. The only changes that may have been throughout is if there's something that is required by the state that we need to put in. But other than that, the only thing that changes in these contracts are the dates from year to year and the total cost of what that contract...
So you really don't, you really don't get it reviewed by the prosecutors?
It used to be, but not, not anymore.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking, why all of these say, "Subject to Approval," but they're already signed? The other thing is, you're an attorney. Why are we, why, I, I don't, for the life of me, understand why we're dating contracts. We're approving these a month late. You know, there, there's no ability to have a contract. Where's this? We're the board that does that. I see the dates that came in, and the dates that came in were, they came in at the end of August and on September first, and your office didn't review these until eleven-eight. That's two months. This should have been done in time, ahead of the contract, so that we can vote on it, to approve it, ahead of time, not a month and a half late.
These are not the only things that I'm looking at, and also, when it's being reviewed, it's also being reviewed by the fiscal department to make sure it meets the requirements that are necessary by the state. So it's not just a review by me, it's a review by the fiscal office too, and they have much, just like everybody else, they have a lot of things that they're reviewing and doing, so it takes a little bit of time, and then by time back and forth and getting the vendors in, you know, we have to work with their schedule to come in and sign it.
What would logic dictate, then? Get these out? Logic would dictate that you would get these out earlier, so that you could, if it takes you indeed that much time to do something, six weeks, and it wasn't reviewed by your fiscal officer until the eighth of November, then...
I don't know exactly.
I read it. Well, see, I, I do, because I read what I, I'm voting on, and so, in my opinion, and I, and I think that you should start doing this. Whether or not the whole Board of Commissioners agrees on doing things in a proper way, you're an attorney, and you should make an effort, and so should all the department heads, to make sure that we're voting on things when they need to be approved, not retrodating contracts. That's not okay. I'm not going to be voting on things that are retro, retroactive anymore, especially contracts. That's what our statutory duty is, as Commissioners. So can we please, I'm asking you, to do...
We will attempt to do that. Unfortunately, there are things that take precedent too, and there are other things that we need to get done also.
A contract that the Commissioners have to sign to make sure that we're signing it before you start having people work should take precedent, okay?
That's your, that's your opinion.
Okay.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Because it's retrodated? No, it's already started, the, the timeframe. We're approving something. I'm just done with that.
Item number nine is to approve Contract Seven-three-five-dash-two-four-dash-eight-zero between the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and Garwin, Inc., for the term of October first, twenty twenty-three, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars. Garwin will provide Title Twenty transportation based on a loaded mile or additional passenger unit of payment to provide non-emergency transportation for eligible and approved Trumbull County residents who have no other means of transportation to and from Title Nineteen Medicaid providers or managed care providers who provide Medicaid reimbursable services.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
And then also, on a note of discussion, our Commissioners' Office, we've said time and time again, we don't need an administrator, because, but, because we're the administrators, but instead, what everyone sees and what I see is just things coming to the Commissioners and them just rubber stamping things. When, we, we should be, the clerk, I'm just going to ask, when things come on and if you see them coming, coming to you, you have the ability to go straight to the prosecutor's office, and I'd ask that our, our office send these, send something out to them, and square that away, so that we don't, we don't receive contracts coming in late. I'd like to have the prosecutor's office give an opinion, and then we should put this out to all of the, all of the departments and agencies that we contract for, to make sure that we're doing things ahead of time, and not retroactively approving, you know, nine months of change orders like we've seen, or contracts after the fact. We just need to start doing things the right way here. It's just upsetting. No. Get your gavel and shut these people up who are screaming.
They're not being recorded for the record.
It doesn't matter. It's disruptive.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
I mean, no, I said, I said no before. I believe that, that's, my comment was related to that, for discussion, and then, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Okay. Item number eleven is to approve Contract Seven-eight-one-dash-two-four-dash-one-zero between Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services and All American USA Taxi, Inc., for the term of October first, twenty twenty-three, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. All American USA Taxi, Inc. will provide pregnancy-related services, transportation based on a loaded mile or additional passenger unit of payment to promote prenatal care for eligible and approved pregnant women who have no other means of transportation to and from authorized Title Nineteen Medicaid providers or managed care providers, providing Medicaid reimbursable services during pregnancy and for twelve months postpartum.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
No, because it's retrodated.
Item number twelve is to receive for record purposes from Family and Community Services, Inc., doing business as Someplace Safe. The documents is listed, dated October first, twenty twenty-three, and to approve the request of Someplace Safe for the release and designation of the Domestic Violence Shelter Funds, Marriage License Fee Monies and Divorce Fee Monies for the year twenty twenty-four, first half and second half, and to notify Someplace Safe of its eligibility to receive these funds, documents, and requests submitted by Laura W. Webb, R.A., Director of Domestic Violence Services for Trumbull and Portage Counties.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Wait, that'd be a motion to receive for record purposes, the...
I'm approving agenda item twelve.
Okay. Motion to receive for record purposes, the family and community, to approve the receipt of that. I hear what you're saying.
Well, this started October first also.
This is not a contract. This is us placing something on file, though it should have been done in advance. The contract is extremely important. This is, this is different. I hear your little game. You said the same thing about board appointments. Sometimes things are left, left out or left off or sometimes, but contracts are legal documents. You have to make sure that we're doing them right. That's our whole purpose. Read, read what the revised code says of the duty.
And we have never, ever, just for the, for the record, we have never, ever, we have never, ever had an audit finding for anything like that.
Record it. I'll record it this time.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to authorize payment to the Treasurer, State of Ohio, Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, for the twenty twenty-three Ohio EPA Annual Discharge Fee, authorized by ORC three-seven-four-five-point-eleven-L four for the Trumbull County Stormwater Phase Two Program in the amount of eight thousand eighty-six dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number fourteen is to concur with the county engineer and authorize the purchase of one twenty-twenty-three Ford four-wheel-drive F-five-fifty truck from Valley Ford Trucks for the total purchase price of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Valley Ford Trucks was able to offer this truck below the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services contract price of seventy-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. This truck is also below the required bid amount, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to authorize the Trumbull County Planning Commission to advertise a public notice in a newspaper of general circulation, announcing the timeframe for and location of the request for price proposal packages for the Project Year Twenty-two Community Development Block Grant, Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program, American Rescue Plan Act, Heat and Shoot, Sanitary Lateral Household Assistance Project, and to send letters to be mailed out to all Trumbull County licensed drain layers.
I'd like to amend this motion to eliminate sending, to eliminate sending the letters out to licensed drain layers. It's, we need to make sure, if we do something like that, that there's a qualified bidders list. And I don't have any proof that that's happened. I know when I was on senior levy, we were trying to get more, we were trying to get more vendors and ask the prosecutor's office if we can send letters out to people who we knew did certain services, and it was no unless the county has a list. You, we can't...
We do have a list. Of licensed drain layers, correct, Gary?
No, that's, that's different than, I don't know if he knows what I'm saying. It's not about the list of whose license. You have to have a, 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 sort of, you have to have a list of... It, it's, it's different. I'm familiar with this. We tried to do it at senior levy. We were told no by the prosecutor's office. You can't send something out unless we have a, a, a list in place. It could be perceived as...
Gary, can you speak to that?
He, he doesn't know.
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. What we are saying here, that there is no one eligible to do this work except for the people on the approved drain layer list. You have to be on the approved drain layer list and able, in order to have the ability to connect a house to the sanitary sewer system. With that said, that's why the planning commission is just going to send it out to all the people on the approved list, which includes over a hundred different contractors that are, that are currently qualified for this work.
There's a process in order to allow the Board of Commissioners to do that, and I don't know that that's been complied with. I discussed this before with Bill Danzo, when we made an effort to find daycares for senior citizens in home services. We were talking about trying to increase the vendors by sending out invitations. We were told absolutely not until we have a list in place that's been adopted by the county. If that doesn't exist, that's why I'm saying, I, I'm not disagreeing that it's a good idea, because I wanted to do it at senior levy, but what I'm saying is, the, the process is us developing an approved list, and then we can give it to them. It's not just, we're going to use this list of licensed people, though I understand what you're saying.
Well, that is an approved list. They have to meet certain requirements to be on it.
I get it.
They have to post a certain bond. They have to, yes. So that's an approved list. I, I don't see the conflict here.
It's, it's a list for us to be able to invite bidders, is what it is. It's different. It's, it would, it would include those same people. If, if Bill Danzo were on the phone, or if they'd actually show up for a Commissioners' meeting, like most communities have their legal counsel, that would be great. But he could explain that.
All right.
In fact, in fact, I think Diane J. Kovik's on the phone. She could explain that, because she's, she was associated with it last time.
This is going out to a hundred different...
Approximately a hundred is on our drain layer list.
I'm very comfortable with that, so...
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Only because of the sending of the letters and us not having adopted a list
for the county to send invitations to bid to, then, no, that's the only reason. And we should make sure, in fact, after the meeting, please reach out on this, because it's, it's important to do this right.
Item number sixteen is to accept a donation from Howland Commons LLC in the amount of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, to be utilized exclusively for a turn lane study to be performed on Mines Road, Howland Township, Ohio, as described in the Technical Scope Proposal dated May eighth, twenty twenty-three, and to enter into a professional services agreement with GAI Consultants, Inc., to perform said study. The Trumbull County Commissioners, together with the Trumbull County Engineer, would like to thank Howland Commons LLC for their generous donation.
Do you have the fund number on this one? I'm not looking at it.
Yes.
You added it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I just wanted to point this out. This came to me on, as an agenda item without a fund number, and I was told this morning when I researched it, that our Commissioners' Office staff, accounts payable clerk, just said, "We'll just send you the check when we get it." In county business, we don't send checks. We don't have the ability to do that, to send to another elected official's office, but we can make sure it's done properly via fund number. So moving forward, if, those aren't county administrators, it's the Board of Commissioners. So if someone, if there's some questions, please reach out to at least me on the board to make sure this is done correctly, and thank you for adding it this morning. Because now it's going to go directly to the Commissioners' Office. Okay.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'll make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to RC one-twenty-one dot twenty-two G four for the purpose of preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Second.
And discussion. Did, did either of the, is this about, which one of these is it about? Is it about approving something? Is it about, I, I received absolutely nothing associated with this agenda item, so I want to know what this is, what this is about. Do you guys know? No, I mean, do the Board of Commissioners...
Yes, it's about collective bargaining with the employees. They're at Job and Family Services. Their contract is up. It's about their contract.
So is it for renewal, or is it going to be discussing the term?
It's the re-opener, re-opener.
It's a re-opener. John Gargano, JFS, is the Child Support Enforcement Agency re-opener. It was a, their, their contract right now was a two-year with a wage re-opener in the third year, Commissioner, with all due respect, you do that every, every meeting with motions from the floor that other two commissioners are not able. Are not able to research and you want us to vote on it immediately. You do it every meeting.
And you just voted on one of them because you realized that one of the agenda items required it. It was a motion from the floor.
Right.
To, because you knew that that was.
But you do routinely when we don't have information.
This is a collective bargaining agreement and we had nothing. When you send over an agenda item, if you want this on the agenda, send it over to the commission. Make sure that Lisa has it, our clerk or someone here, to give us a copy of what your purpose for requesting the, the, the executive session is. And give us a copy so that we can start to review it instead of showing it to us when we want.
And again, I gotta tell you, we had a public workshop yesterday. You could have been there and asked them face-to-face. You chose not to, so you don't have any info on it because you weren't there and now you want to complain and bitch about it.
Do you?
I talked to him about it at the meeting yesterday.
Talking to someone, I want to know.
Don't care about talking.
You could have asked for it in writing yesterday at a public meeting.
It is a common practice. We should be.
Just because we didn't do your homework for you, doesn't mean you can sit up here and complain about it.
Okay, so I, we all understand that you just go ahead and approve things without having any, anything but some discussion with people. But what I like to do is read things and everyone knows that I know how to, I'm like the one that knows how to under, understand things and reads. What we're voting on and the two of you just rubber stamp whatever comes in front of you. This is a regular.
The two of us came to work yesterday, unlike you, and did work.
Where were you at the meet? You didn't even go to our, our.
I was here yesterday morning for our meeting, correct?
So where were you during our Trumbull?
It's not your business where I was for that excuse.
Right, okay. Excuse. Okay, so either way, when you send something to us, send all of it. Not all of us are equal here. Two, two of them will just rubber stamp everything. I, I'm telling you, send it over so that we get a copy of it. Because this is enough. I've been here long enough for you guys to know to send us what we're voting on.
Last I checked, two to one wins.
We're not, we're not voting on.
You're not voting.
We're not voting on anything. This is informative.
Either way, what we're discuss, what we're discussing, we should not, we should not receive, not, we should not just have you come up and tell us what's going on. The day of the meeting or the day of.
Again, you do that every week with motions from the floor.
Deflection, gaslighting and projection and everyone with a background in mental health knows that.
It's true.
No, we're talking about a, a topic in front of you. I feel bad for your wife because you probably do that to her too. What we're doing right now is talking about this topic. We're talking about this topic. We're not talking about anything.
It's so ignorant, I can't even comment.
Let's focus on this. The, the focus is on this and moving forward and it should have been backwards. You need to make sure that you're giving us information as to what every agenda, agenda item is. And what it, what it entails.
That's the point of the executive session, to go in and discuss it.
You know, be quiet.
Other agenda items, we've always provided that to you. Even the transportation, we email it to each one of the commissioners.
And I got it and I read it and that's what informed my vote and thank you for that, but this should have had it too. Alright, thanks.
This is a discussion.
Okay.
There's nothing there to be in writing.
Commissioner, you're out of control.
Copy of the, of the, the contract that's being read.
Mr. President, let's go into executive session.
You go into executive session to discuss things you don't want to put in writing and talk about.
You take about that. Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
It's going to be signed right after the meeting. We just needed the, we needed the vote to put on it. How would you like to do it? If you, if you want to wait, I just. I can't. I, I'm not sure how long, but soon as the meeting's over, we're going to print it and we have to put the vote on. So she has it right there. Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. Okay, great. I didn't get to like read through that at all, so. Okay. Okay.
I was gonna say, where are you going with this? Yes. Um, it's a break area. I mean, there's seating in there. There is seating down there. Yes. Yes. And it's pretty nice. It is, it's very nice. It's very nice compared to what was there. They've made it very nice compared to what was there. It's open. I, I suggest you go down and take a look. It's very nice. There is, there's a. Yes. Yes, or you can open an account. Somehow. Um, but yes, it's very nice. That's a nice place to go. Yes, but that's very good food. Nova? Occasionally, yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll walk it when the weather's nice, we'll walk over. Not really. I mean, we've walked up to Mocha House. Or. Don't want a lunch break. Oh, okay. I think that's, is it one twenty-four? Isn't it called, isn't it called one, one twenty-four? Bistro one twenty-four? I don't know. I have not been in that. No, I haven't been in that yet. Really? Oh. I'm not aware of that. Pardon me? Um, well, I came from another department in two thousand eighteen. So going on eighteen years. Yes, I do. Yeah, I like Don. She's good. Yes, um, I'm waiting for confirmation though, that it's not conflicting with any of their own schedules. So I just sent that out this morning. Hopefully I hear back from everybody, but I can. Yes.
Yeah, so I, so as long as I can look at them and say, I don't need to go with that one.
Yeah.
Right.
You can cherry pick which ones you want. Okay, I get it, I get it.
My thing was.
No, I just put that up. I just put that up myself. I put that back. I put that back.
Why in front of my, why in front of my phone?
I just put it right. No, well, I didn't mean to do it. I didn't even notice that. I didn't even notice that. I did not even notice that. I didn't.
You didn't notice that? You didn't notice?
No, I put it up here on the ledge.
While he was screaming and.
And I was talking to other people in here. Okay, so can I get you to sign this? By number eight, that's for the national option. Because we want to get it framed.
Yeah, we don't do things in the meetings. You can play them back there all you want, but during the meetings, we don't do. I don't, I'm not playing games. I'm just trying to get my work. You gotta put that in front of my space ever again. Do you understand?
Would you please?
Do you understand that? I'm just telling you, I'm starting, don't touch my space. Don't put anything in front of my space. Do you get that? No, it was here. This is my space. Anyone, anything.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not going to get into this with you up here.
Don't do it again.
Please, I need you to sign that so I can get this framed for them.
You've heard what I said. I just want to make sure you're acknowledging, don't put anything in my space.
I try not to go anywhere near it.
But you did, and I'm telling you not to do it again.
I'm not gonna argue with you about it.
Because via, via proxy, if you're doing something for this guy via proxy, there's gonna be something in place against, and that includes you too. Just know that.
You didn't have to throw it. Can I get you to sign this as well? What is it? This is G A I. So I can get this back to him.
This I already rec- did I re- read this? No, yes, I think I read this already.
We just added signature lines for all of you.
It's, it's the exact same thing I read.
We just changed the signature lines.
Okay, this is from my consulting company. Did the prosecutor's office look at it?
Yes.
I don't see anything. Wait, request authorized by the Board of Commissioners. Where is something?
He's the one that suggested that we add lines for all three missionaries.
Where is that? Did you?
No, I went, we went, I went down in person and showed it to her.
I just want to note with me. Can I see something that says he'll stamp it, approved as a form? We never, we never sign agreements prepared by the vendor if we think were to prove.
Can we have that clip, please?
Okay. This time, make a motion to reconvene from executive session to. Uh, pursuant to R C one twenty-one dot twenty-two G four for the purpose of preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations. Uh, or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion from the floor, uh, to prevent anyone from approaching the dais. Without the approval of the president of the board.
When we're in session?
During, from the course of our meeting and from the time the meeting opens to the time it adjourns.
I don't think that happens anyway. I, when did it happen?
I'm just, it's a, it's a motion. I mean, I'm putting a motion.
We're putting a motion out there for what reason, I guess. I, I've never had somebody approach here. Neither have I.
They, they ask for permission and then they do. It's for, it's for our safety, for my safety, for my comfort level. I don't, I, I'm sure you, if you guys don't mind people coming up to you, that's fine. I have.
I mean, there's a core protocol when you're in a meeting, you don't. Standard, we don't do a motion that. Say that again?
I, I am just asking, I made a motion on the floor and I would ask that that be. It's something that was discussed before, I believe.
I have never had anybody come up here and threaten me in my time, in my ten years here.
My motion again was just to make sure that they, whoever comes, if, if anyone approaches the dais, that they receive permission from the chair, like they normally do to you. You know how people are talking, they say, can we approach you?
Yeah, and adjust the mic. Yeah, if you're in a talk, you adjust the mic. I want to see what this is all about. You're, you're bringing.
I don't know what it's about either.
We don't know about it. If there's more information, I need to know.
John Shook, Trumbull County resident. When y'all were getting ready to go into executive session, which I believe means this meeting officially ends here. And then this is just a room full of people, right? The meeting's back there. When y'all left, she tried to leave her phone on here to record the room, as she's done many times, so that she could run back to Facebook and talk about everybody here. So I simply asked the room if anybody agreed to her recording. Because it's my understanding that in Ohio, at least one person has to be in agreement to a recording. But when she leaves the room, then she can no longer be in agreement to that recording. Nobody here agreed to her recording, so I simply wanted to come up and block her phone, and she threw a fit. She started acting like I was being hostile.
Yes, one person has to be part of the conversation.
This is a public room, a public space, and there is no reasonable expectation of privacy in the space. So that's, that's.
I don't know, personal recording, I, I don't believe you're correct on that.
That's right. You should have been to the course, you should have been to the course of training because we went over this. And there is, there is some degree of, of. You have to be there. You can't leave your phone unattended. You have to be there.
During meeting, yeah, right.
Meeting wasn't going on.
That's right, meeting wasn't going on here.
Okay. Also, you accused me of putting the sign in front of your phone, and I didn't. I put it up here on the ledge.
I, I, she didn't have nothing to do with that. I put the sign in front of the phone.
Can we stop with the childish games, please? Can we just stop with the childish games?
On the ledge here.
He put it on the ledge, and then I took it. Nobody takes a fall.
I don't pay attention to the phone that much.
All right, motion dies for lack of a second. There's no need for that, and I don't believe.
I have nothing to hide. I'll be back up here later to talk again.
He's stalking you, you said?
Commissioner, will you have me sign this resolution so we can get this?
Absolutely.
This framed for.
By the way, resolutions can be signed prior to vote. For Bill Danson.
Copy of it?
Ask him.
Get a copy of it?
I don't need to get a copy of it.
Yeah, it's a resolution, not a resolution until you resolve it, until you vote on it.
Right.
It's just a piece of paper with signatures.
But unfortunately, Commissioner Frenchco believes otherwise.
It was always done in the past that way. That's why we're always ready.
Okay, does anybody else have anything for the greater good of Trumbull County?
Um, I do, I do want to bring something up.
Look, we, I called on him first, then we'll come to you next, Commissioner.
Hi, Mr. Glenn City and now it's Trumbull County. I'm just a spectator these last couple of years, but. When I read item seven through. Eleven, I believe. I want to know if everybody's agenda says the same thing. State capital budget through fund share for modification. No, county general revenues are requested. So why, why are we arguing about this? The federal fund is so you guys can allocate these funds. To people that need them. There should be no argument. It, it, don't ever reject money coming from the Fed or the state for people in our counties. Um, on, on fifteen. The license drain layers. Thank you so much for reaching out to the Trumbull County. License drain layers before you reach out to other counties, other cities, other. Let, let's try to keep all the business we can within Trumbull County. I, I'd like commissioners to. Save us money and make us money rather than pay out money, cost us money. Thank you, Mr. Malloy.
Okay, Commissioner.
I, we had a productive meeting when we met and went over all of the ARPA applications and that way to make the decisions collectively. At this point, uh, we're having other entities, other nonprofits, other. Political subdivisions submit additional applications, and I think we need to, uh. Continue that work that we did in the past at that meeting and hold off on those. And, and then till we have another meeting publicly to go through the balance of those applications and make decisions so that they're not. Something didn't get through, and then someone says we should have gotten.
We have not put anything forward without your participation, not one. We've received some after that we agreed wa- in this meeting on a Wednesday, there were some of the townships like Mecca and. Farmington, uh, West Farmington Village and other places that did not submit anything, and the three of us agreed they could submit it. We put in the maybe column to be addressed at a later date.
So I think Braceville had, did not.
Correct. The way we found out Braceville did not, and we found out that, uh, still to this moment, Green still has not, and Howland still has not. But, but the ones that we've said, we made the, the gentleman, gentleperson's agreement, that if ones were out there that we overlooked or were missed, and they were township or a small subdivision, we would accept them into the portal. Uh, Martha would allow them to come in the portal because its portals closed, and then stick them in the maybe column for us to address at a later time. That's all we did.
Had, uh, additional ones as well, like the Fund for Warren's Future sent something in, and there's been other ones that are coming in as well.
Which other ones besides that? That's the only ones I know of, are the township ones, municipality ones, and the Fund for Warren, and they came and gave a presentation.
The collaborative between the Chamber and the Western Support.
That wasn't an ARPA request.
It was just, okay, well, I'm, I think there was another one for, um. Broadband to fund this guy's position. So.
Jim Kinnick.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, I, before anything else is decided, because it also costs, it costs money to obtain these legal opinions.
We have not got any legal opinions on them. They're in the maybe column for the next time we meet.
Wait, okay. I just want to set a, a hard deadline for these. Let people get their applications in and go over the balance of those together and set a date. We have to get that money appropriated.
Right now, that would be hard. Um, Tanya Rogers was out with some illness, so she hasn't approved anything in the last two weeks. So we have forty-four or forty-eight that are still pending with her. So until she gets through those and we see what's approved and what's not, it's hard for us to look at the other ones, because we don't know how much money we have remaining yet.
Should, and I think we should prioritize them, go through them and then collectively so that we have an end to them, so that they're, it, it just. It's still lingering, and I think it's wise to go through, to close everything off, go through their balance of them. Um, the other thing is, it should something, and I want to put this out on, on the record, should, should one of those, uh, not come through. Uh, I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to do something for the veterans. So, uh, I know you wanted to give your friend at the USS Oklahoma, um, money, but if that doesn't.
Your printer, your, your friend.
Well, um, I voted, I voted no, so, because it's, it's, it's probably not going to be eligible, but, um, I want to make sure that we're able to do something for, like, something recommended maybe by the Veteran Service Commission.
Maro had another veteran's.
Had another Veterans Outreach one. If you look through your packet. They're moving into a new building. We were gonna assist with the windows.
Yeah, the Veterans Outreach, and then there was, um, I think there's another. There are two of them that work closely with the, with the Veterans Commission. I can't remember where they are, but I just, I would like to include them.
We have. They're in the portal, the new portal with Martha. She's got all the spreadsheet of all the remaining. Asks that we have.
So again, I.
We go over those at the.
So again, it would be difficult this time to shut it down and make a final ruling because we have forty-some that we don't even know. We've already had two rejected out of the first four. So we, until we know how much money we have, it'd be irresponsible to do that. Let's let her get through the bulk of them and then set a date after we can see at the end how much money we're gonna have remaining. So we can be fair to everybody when we make our decisions.
We know that it's eligible for one of the political subdivisions, and then we know it'll be eligible for the next one. I think that we could. Move a bit more quickly before costs of things go up too, because everything is increasing in cost.
We said in the beginning, we were gonna get legal opinions on everything, but now we're saying we're not gonna get legal opinions on everything. Each situation is different and could be nuanced. That, that's my opinion. Okay, we can agree to disagree, but that's what I feel.
There was a, um, I think there was a vehicle emergency, some. Vehicle for, um, one of the townships, and then Johnson, we said that we would, we prefer that they get one new because someone found a better deal, and I'm.
I've been in Johnson, we approve ambulances, yes.
City, I'm pretty sure another.
Zeta is put, put a request in. Since theirs was denied, their three hundred thousand road was denied, they put in for a two hundred thousand dollar ambulance and.
And I think Braceville is too. So what I'm saying is, like, let's get those ones going because the cost is going to increase with vehicle.
Okay, but we can't jump them ahead of the pack.
Right.
That wouldn't be fair to all the other.
There's forty-four opinions that we still need to get.
And she hasn't ruled on the first two ambulances yet. We have to wait for her to rule on those. We're just trying to be fair. Does anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County?
John Shook, Trumbull County resident. Commissioner Malloy, I, I might need a little extra time. I'll try to keep it as brief as I can.
Start with your two minutes and we'll take it from there.
Okay. Commissioner, yesterday in the workshop, it was mentioned that somebody requested surveillance footage of this room from last week's meeting. Can you tell me who requested that footage?
Commissioner Frenchco requested it, and we granted it.
Okay. Uh, it was brought to my attention this morning, right before I came in here, so I'm still learning that the commissioner has tried to file a civil stalking protection order against me as of yesterday. Now, she's already talked about my medical here in this me, in these meetings, and now she's trying to, at a minimum, in my opinion, stomp all over my First Amendment rights. Which is amazing since how she has accused the Sheriff's Department of arresting her and stomping on her First Amendment rights. Uh, I am learning the details of what's happening, whether it's gonna be granted, what's gonna go. I will one hundred percent be seeking a lawyer. Uh, anyone in the media who would like to talk to me about this, I'm more than happy to do so. It's very upsetting. It's very upsetting. And I don't know, I had a hard time reading her complaint because it was chicken scratch, but the three main arguments was me coming here to these meetings. Uh, a meeting I attended last week at Warren City, where I went to speak out against the pay raises. I have a witness that testified to why I was there, and Council President, uh, Brown is here. When I went to the meeting, I didn't end up speaking because I didn't know before getting there that there's a process at that meeting. You have to read paperwork, fill it out, and turn it in. Otherwise, I would have spoke at the meeting about why I didn't agree with the pay raises. He can confirm this about the, about how the process works. So that's why I didn't end up speaking. I wasn't there for Commissioner Frenchco. I come here, I go through security, I sit in this room with two sheriff's deputies at a chance to exercise my First Amendment. to exercise my First Amendment right and get two minutes. Another, uh, thing she wrote was, uh, a Republican Party signing event that took place a few weeks ago. I was at that event long before Commissioner Frenchco ever showed up. It was a signing event for the public to come in, meet the candidates and have fun. I was there at eleven thirty. She showed up at one o'clock. She was removed from that meeting that day because she was being disruptive. The police had to be called. She never said a word while she was there about having a problem with me. In the parking lot, after she was told to leave, she also made a Facebook video where again, she never said a word about having a problem with my being there. It wasn't until hours later that evening that she came back to Facebook and started commenting about how I'm a stalker and I'm like Charles Manson or something. I mean, these are very dangerous accusations to be putting out there about somebody, especially when she's a female and I'm a male. That could be very dangerous for me and what consequences I may have to face because of it. I don't understand why she can't just do her job. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Yes, sir, Mr. Joseph, uh, could we have someone bring him the mic, please, deputy? While you're doing that, I just want to remind everybody that tonight is the grand opening of Bass Pro Shop in the Eastern Mall Complex. Six P M is the ribbon cutting. There'll probably be thousands of people there, I would assume. It's right, coincides perfectly with hunting season, so we hope to see a lot of residents there and we welcome Bass Pro Shop to our community and the tax dollars are going to be generated through that store.
On that, I'm Mark Joseph, uh, Naus, Ohio. On, on that note, can you make sure they have like heated coats? Because I got to get some for my godchild who goes to football games at Notre Dame, so can you use your influence on that, please? You're not allowed. I, I just have a, uh, I, I need some clarification, uh, some education, I guess. Um, the, um, uh, the topics about Garwin and, uh, USA Taxi, you know, that I'm very interested in transportation. It's, it says in here that it's, um, a pass-through funding through the federal government. So that means that our senior levy money will not be affected by this.
Doesn't affect senior levy money and has nothing to do with W R T A passed through through them.
All right, I wanted to make sure.
Totally separate. I asked that same question.
Oh, thank you. Um, the other one was, why is it restricted to only Medicaid? Or is it Medicaid and Medicare?
I, I do not know that. John, uh, may have an answer, but he does.
I guess, and the lead to, the reason for that question is the more we can spread that out, and I don't know if the pass-through funding doesn't allow Medicare. Then that takes off some of the pressure from the other transportation companies that do handle Medicare. It, it would soften the load a bit. Um, so I, oh, I'm sorry.
Based on, isn't it, it's based on the funding. What is for?
You know, it's, that is specifically for, uh, Medicaid purposes, uh, not for Medicare.
Yeah, everything has to do with federal money, uh, based on the object of that and of the population that it's meeting those needs. If it's, if it's earmarked for Medicaid, it's got to go to Medicaid, uh, for everything. No, no.
But we did get also some good news. We did get our, our senior grant for seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Well, it, the Jewish community notified us of it and then our senior levy people filled the grant application out. It is money for the Board of Commissioners to decide where it goes, but there are stipulations. So much has to go to education, so much has to go to food, then the other fifty percent can be spread out through another, another variety of causes with stipulations. We're working with our senior levy advisory board to help us decide where to spend that money. And also Jewish Community Center has offered their support, uh, in helping us and they provide a service with food delivery. Um, but seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars we didn't expect. It wa, is going to help a lot of seniors and it can be used for transportation.
At least a portion of it.
Portion of it can be used for transportation. So we are blessed in this community that we received that grant. I, I thank Diane for doing the, the hard work of doing all the paperwork. It went back and forth, back and forth. And they gave us a very short deadline from when the feds notified us that this grant's available to when we got it was like two weeks. So she had to work with them pretty much every day filling something out or signing something. Even myself, I had to come in and sign a paperwork to make sure it got there on time and it, um, we're, we're blessed and honored that we got that, that money. And we're looking forward to helping a lot of seniors with that money and the board here will, will decide in the very near future. I think we have till March to spend it, so this money is going to be rained down on the community very quickly.
Sure is. Thank you.
It's a nice one for all of us in the county, so.
Same time, we have to be planning for when that's over and on continuing services because the problem is people sometimes get, uh, used to the services that you're providing with a grant and then just as W R T A, the grant's over. So you have to plan in advance. We just can't wait, um, until that expires and figure out what we're going to do with the conference, so.
Does anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? All right, I entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We need to do a safety check on.
Yeah, let's, let's do phone.
Sterling hasn't called in for a while. I think someone should do.
No, 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 we just need to be fair to the public. We do a public comment section. We need to be fair to the public, so I would draw my second.
Okay.
Uh, phone line star six, if you have something productive and for the good of Trumbull County. Star six.
Patty, Patty there, Sterling.
Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Cantila Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
We'll see you all in two weeks.